...night, held on September 25th. Previously known as Technology Night, this event was expanded and renamed the Edina Resource Night for multilingual families. In addition to technology, the event featured Edina Give and Go, members of our transportation team, high school counselors, and others. So tonight I'd like to welcome up to the dais Cultural Liaisons Blanca Diaz de Leon, Montserrat Seploveda, and Hussein Osman, who are here to share details about the event. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Gableer, School Board Member, Dr. Bitman, and attendees. My name is Hussein Osman. I'm the cultural liaison for Edina at the high school. I'm joined tonight by Dr. Blanca de Leon, Latino culture, and my partner at the high school. And we have our new member who joined, Man. So tonight, we're here tonight to discuss our event that created the Somali night and the Latino night. And also, so our work is based on the strategic plan B says, strategy B reads point three. This event helped address as a cultural barrier to success for our Somali and Latino families. Blanca will also describe former eventists and how we imagine better working with our family needs.
Good night. Thank you for having us. Yeah, this is a project that was born many, many years ago as a technology night. We were in the district, we were using another platform for students and parents to use and to control. When we switched the platform, we thought that it was a good idea to provide training for parents and students on how to use it, especially for parents who don't speak the language and don't have the computer skills to handle the new system. So we created this technology night. With time, we, this Stop Finder app appeared in the horizon, and we tried to include it, and it started growing and growing. When the pandemic hit, we stopped for a while, but now these last few years, we are renewing, retaking the project and doing it again. We are including more resources, and we are including more communities. And I think that's it. The redesign is there. And, Man.
Hi, good night. So in the future, we would like to include other communities, not only Somali and Latino speaking families. We also want to partnership with other resources. For example, Metro South said they will be here next year. And we're just moving forward, want this event to be bigger and to have more helpful resources for families. And do you have any questions about the event?
Board members, any questions for our guests this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just had a curiosity as to how do we identify and how well do we reach the parents of the children to invite them to make sure that their participation engagement with this event can reach as many of them as possible?
You're talking about the measure the results or how to reach out to the family?
No, how do we, like, how do we actually ensure, so if we have so many families of the different cultural groups that we have in our, in our school district, how do we make sure that we can get them to come to these events? What is the communication mechanism or how do we outreach to them?
We use a few means of communication. The first one and the most important to us is the personal relationship we build with families over time.
Okay.
Every time they call to request a service or a question or something, we invite them and make sure that they are aware of the event. We have any other means, like, you can talk about the way you...
So, for example, with my community, I reach out to them in multiple avenues. Like, for example, email now, email will not work most of the time. It's either I have to phone call each one by one or do a voice recording, and sometimes I get a lot of calls back, or a text message, or friends and families will be like, hey, we have a meeting, just know that, and just continue with that way. And it has been a success so far, as far as to that one specific community. But although, also other communities might be different strategies that we might implement just to go ahead and forward and see what works and whatnot.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to thank each of you, as well as Franny, for the work that happens behind the scene. We've seen tremendous progress over the last few years, and we're committed to continuing that progress as there's much more to do. I see the impact that each of you have on our families and our students on a day-to-day basis, and their eyes just light up, and they're so grateful for the work that you do each and every day. So on behalf of the board, myself, and our entire team, just want to sincerely thank you for being part of our district.
Agree. When I hear about what you're doing and I look at our strategic plan, you highlighted one area, but the reality is, is what you're talking about is all over our strategic plan. So thank you for the work that you do to bridge that home life with our students, and it does make a difference. So thank you for being here tonight and talking to us. All right, next on the agenda is hearing for members of the public, and we do not have anyone here to address the board this evening, so we will move on to a presentation that we have from one of our district mission-aligned partners, Edina Education Fund. And we have Kathy Rendelman, Executive Director of the Edina Ed Fund, to talk to us about their work, their impact, and how we as a community can support their efforts. So welcome Kathy.
Good evening, Chairperson Allen, or Chairperson Gableer, excuse me. School Board Members, Interim Superintendent Bitman, Cabinet Members, and fellow community members. My name is Kathy Rendelman, and I'm the Executive Director of the Edina Education Fund. Thank you for having me here this evening. Tonight I'm going to walk you through what work we did last year for the community and take a look ahead of what is going on for this year and what we've got in store for the year '25, '26 for all of our students and staff. So before we begin, I'd like to just take a moment and look at what we have for our vision, our mission, and who we serve as the Edina Education Fund. You'll notice as I walk through the next couple slides, there are many similarities as what we do in the Edina Education Fund, as with the Edina Public Schools for the vision and the mission. We are here only to serve the Edina Public Schools, so that is on purpose that we have many similarities. Our vision as the Edina Education Fund is to ensure educational excellence in the Edina Public Schools for all students and staff. And as you can see in our first slide here, here are some of our students that are helping to ensure this excellence. We have student board members, there are seven of them, and a couple of them, it is their job to take our mission in our work, our program in literacy, and to help spread that throughout our district. And last year, after a really hard year and a half work to start a tutor center over at our middle schools, actually launched that program over at Valley View. And this is a group of our tutors over at Valley View getting all trained in to start that program, which happened at the end of the school day at Valley View, offering tutoring in a couple help labs over there at the end of the period, and they were over there once a week all year long over at Valley View. And this year, we're hoping to continue that program. It'll start up right after MEA and spread it over to Southview on Friday mornings. So more to come on that. Our mission: As an independent mission-aligned partner of the Edina Public Schools, the Edina Education Fund secures incremental funding for district-wide programs and services that strengthen academic learning and support the whole person on their educational journey. So not only do we work in our programs, which we will speak further about as I go along here, but we offer many different services under our umbrella. We do lots of things as the Ed Fund that you'll see throughout my presentation this evening. And we don't do that for just our work within the classroom, but we really try to support the whole student. It's more than just what we teach them in the classroom, but we're teaching them as an entire human being. So our work within mental health and wellness and social emotional learning and everything we do to help develop our people, to send them out into the world when they're done within the safety of our walls, and to prepare them for the world and what's ahead is really important to us. What you see here in these pictures are a really good sign of that. Some of our students helped out this summer. We had the privilege of helping out at our Excite Ed program. Learning happens year-round, as you know, in Edina Public Schools, and our summer program is outstanding here with Community Ed. And we were honored to help out and create a literacy fair, where two afternoons, we had students go in, and instead of having your traditional carnival, they were able to design games that were centered around literacy. So instead of students spinning the wheel and just getting a sucker, they got to spin and have a word and be able to find a couple words that rhymed with that word and show off their skills. We had about 20 games going on centered around literacy, all around Dr. Seuss-themed games that were all designed by our high schoolers. Who we serve: All Edina Public Schools students and staff. We believe in serving every hornet every day, 365 days a year, in all 10 buildings from the Early Learning and Family Center all the way through grade 12. As you see on this slide here, we have our little learners over at Highlands, and we believe serving all of our students, all the way up to making sure that we have professional development for our teachers. Both of these slides show our science of reading. So not only are we teaching our little learners the science of reading, but also making sure that we have professional development for our teachers in the science of reading. We've got our special ed departments learning science of reading in that slide. So why the Edina Education Fund? Well, this is a group that's very well-versed in the funding for public schools. I don't think I need to go into this too in-depth, but this is how schools are funded. This is how public education is funded. We get our funding from the government here in Edina Public Schools. We get approximately 60 or so percent of our funding from the state government. We get a decent amount of funding from local property taxes and levies and bonds. That's how we do things in the state of Minnesota. And then we get about just over 1% from the federal government here in Edina. That gap that you see there, I don't have it labeled, because every year it varies, what is that gap there? Some years it's small or negligible, and some years it's bigger than that. We're on a year where the gap was not very big. We were able to close that with the great work that all of you do. It is your job to make sure that that gap is non-existent at the end of a balanced budget season. Well, the federal government gives us funding. We try to lobby that work. That's why we have a Legislative Action Committee, and those of you that work on that committee know that amazing work that our students do. I'm proud to go up to the Capitol with them every year and see our outstanding students standing up in front of our legislatures. That's amazing. And that is the first role that we have to make sure that we have funding for our schools. Then we go in, and all of you do your great job, and you balance our budget. After that, fundraising efforts are what can be done. That's not work that is worked into our budget, but it's really work that can do two things. It can either add extras to the classrooms after the budget is balanced, or it can provide what we like to call it the Ed Fund early entry. And what does that mean? It might mean that there's something that was put off in the budget because it can't be done this year, and it's going to be done in a subsequent year. But maybe if the Ed Fund were to step in, it could either be done earlier, or it could be done a little bit more than it was planned originally. A great, a great example of that is the science of reading. That's something that the Ed Fund was able to put in money for, that we were able to move forward on faster than our neighboring districts because we were able to fund some of that work. Since 1995, which is the year that we were established, the Ed Fund has put forward $8.9 million in grants to Edina Public Schools. And I will say that that number is fairly conservative. That's the amount of money that I'm actually able to track down to the penny. It's actually a little bit more than that. But that is the amount of money that we have got record of in our QuickBooks account. But I will tell you that we are able to track that down to each and every student that we are able to bring over to Edina Public Schools. I'm pretty proud of that. So let's take a look at where our finances went last year. This past year, we brought over $384,511. The vast majority of it went to literacy, and that was to the science of The vast majority of it went to literacy and that was to the science of reading. That was our third year in major funding for the science of reading and actually a pretty proud year for the Ed Fund for the science of reading. It was actually our smallest year for science of reading. However, it was our only year that we did not have federal funding grant money. So considering we had no large grant going into it, $195,000 is a lot of money when you're looking at individual donors. Would also like to give a shout out to all of our individual parent teacher organizations, all 10 of them, including the Early Learning and Family Center put into that money. So a huge thank you to all of them for helping us reach our goal. For our mental health and wellness money, I would like to say that of that $43,000, approximately $30,000 of that went to students and a little over $13,000 went to staff. So that was a great accomplishment for us last year. And then you can read down there some of the other highlights. Once again, we had about $65,000 go to scholarships. We've got a fantastic Rotary Global Scholar Program, many other areas that we help support in our schools. So what are we going to do this year? Well, obviously we've got our three main areas of programming, literacy, STEAM, and mental health and wellness. So let's walk through them and see where our goals were at. First up, we've got literacy. This year's goal looks low to me, which is odd, still $108,000, but $108,000 is our lowest literacy goal we've seen in four years. Science of reading goal at $108,000 will cover us, we believe, for our fourth and fifth grade teachers along with our sixth through 12 language arts teachers. So that's what we've set it at. Those teachers are a little bit less professional development hours and a little bit cheaper rates. So that's what we're looking for. This literacy goal is going to allow us to spend money in a couple other of our programming Our STEAM area, we're looking at $67,500. That's going to allow us to spend some money in STEAM. That's our science, technology, engineering, the arts, and math. This is an area that for the last few years, we actually have not reached our goal. So we're hoping to reach that this year and be able to invest some money, to bank some money, and be able to pay out where needed to help our Project Lead the Way areas, our arts programs, and some other things that have been lacking over the last few years, at least from an Ed Fund funding perspective. And then our mental health goal, this is a high goal that we've had for the last couple of years. We had a very high mental health goal in 2020 and 2021, and now we're approaching that level that we're looking for again, $171,000. Of that, $30,000 is set aside for staff mental health. We've got $80,000 that we set aside for benevolence funding. That's our funding for our individual students so that they can sit with a therapist in the building. We actually allow for $1,848 per student. That allows them 12 sessions with a therapist, works out to be about three months of therapy. During that time, our therapists work with our social workers and other people in the district to make sure a continuity of care for when that time is up, they have somewhere to go to. Sometimes the therapy is done and sometimes it's not. We got to make sure that our students have a plan afterwards. We also put aside $21,000 in discretionary funding. Mental health is not something that we can afford to be done with at the end of the year and we can pay out and have a zero account balance. I always need to have money on hand when we start the year up because there's always those couple of students that need to have therapy support when the beginning of the year starts. And then we've also put aside $40,000 this year for social emotional learning. That is new for us. We are trying to start a funding for social emotional learning this year. That money is going to go towards supplementing programs in our district that already exist. Many of our elementary school buildings have social emotional learning already and we're hoping to fund part of those programs that are already there. As you all know, this is programming that should be happening in every single one of our classrooms, whether they are at the Early Learning and Family Center all the way through grade 12. Social emotional learning is one of those things that whether you're talking about group work or working on yourself skills or presentation skills, anything you can name is part of that. And as employers tell us, that is one of the biggest things that they're looking for of their students as a well-rounded person when they graduate. Our services are one of the other main components of what the Ed Fund does, and there's a couple main areas in there. First of all, our fiscal sponsorships and PTO partnerships. The Ed Fund houses all of the EHS activities and student-led clubs under our umbrella. What does that mean? Well, that means if you are a student at EHS and you are part of one of the 30 activities or 71 student-led clubs at EHS and you want to have a Devani's Night or a car wash, then you have to work with Kathy at the Ed Fund. And I'm happy to work with you. And we set up time to work with all of our student-led clubs and activities to make sure that they understand the rules that they need to follow. And we work with them through that and we will be their bank for them and teach them how to work through their fiscal responsibilities there. Okay? We also are proud to work with many other groups like Edina Unified, E AAA, everything from the elementary school robotics teams like the Cornelia First Lego League Robotics Club, Edina Friends of Forensic, which is the parents' club for speech and debate, and many, many more. The other two main big areas of our services are senior scholarships, of which we typically do around 58 scholarships a year. Last year that amounted to about $65,000. This year we're introducing a couple more. We'll see what that shakes out to be. That's where the Ed Fund works with individual donors in our community to set up scholarships and work with them on the restrictions they would like to have. And then we work with the high school to make sure that those restrictions are kept in place when the high school decides who those recipients are in the springtime. And we also house the Edina Alumni Association under our umbrella. Every year we work with individual classes that come in for their reunions. And that can be a reunion class calling me and telling me, can you help promote that we have a reunion coming up? Or can you help give us a tour of the high school? This year we offered tours to many graduating classes that you can see on there. We do that all summer long on Fridays and Saturdays and into the fall. And some classes ask if we can be their web hosting site. And that can mean that we have them on our website. We actually take registrations for their reunion. We handle their ticketing and we're their bank for them. So it's kind of a plethora of what we do for these classes. It just depends. That is great for the district actually too, because it brings these alumni into our community. It helps us to understand who they are. And then when we want to reach out to alumni and to say, hey, we're looking for someone that's in this area and we'd really love to connect with our alumni to be able to have our high school students or our middle school students, connect with them, we have a resource and a way to be able to do that. So what all this comes down to is the Edina Education Fund is really everywhere. And whether your student has been touched with the science of reading through literacy or maybe they're in a drawing class at the high school, maybe they were part of that Excite Ed camp this past summer and they came home and they told you about that high school student that really helped them out and played this game and they had so much fun with it. Maybe they're in the Girls United Club that just printed a T-shirt and the Project Lead the Way and that short teacher with the curly hair helped them. Or maybe they love their Project Lead the Way class. Maybe they're a rising senior and they're going to be applying for a scholarship and they're almost part of the Edina Alumni Association. Or maybe you're an Edina alum. It's all part of the Edina Education Fund. We are here 365 days a year because learning is here 365 days a year. And it really is important that we're here to support our students and our staff every single day of the year and making sure that all of this wonderful work can happen. We appreciate all of you that are part of our sustaining circle and to help make the Edina Education Fund happen. And we really hope that you can help us spread the word. The more people that can give just $5 a month and to help sustain the Ed Fund and the great work we can do, the more we can do. And I really appreciate you letting us be here tonight.
Questions for me?
No question, but I just wanted to point out that, again, when you think about everything that the Ed Fund has done since 1995, but especially over the last five years since COVID, with the science of learning, with our READ Act, and all things we've done with mental health and wellness, Edina Public Schools could not do what it needs to do for all of its students without the assistance of the Ed Fund. So as the liaison for the board to the Ed Fund, I can only echo, getting people to recognize that constant support for the Ed Fund is one of the best ways possible for us to give us the flexibility at the school district level to address the different needs that we might have. So thank you Kathy, all the parents who are on the board, all the people who support the Ed Fund. Really, it's a critical cornerstone of what we're able to do in the district, and so thank you for all of your effort.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you for your work. And I know that there's other board members here this evening and staff, and thank you for all that you do to support each and every one of our kiddos. So appreciate you. All right, we will be moving on to our consent agenda. And is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right, before we vote to approve the consent agenda, Director Ellenberg is going to abstain from voting just because of her work with MSBA, so the rest of us will be voting on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Aram, do I have a second?
Second.
Man. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. We are now moving on to our discussion items. And our only item for discussion tonight is the first reading of several policies. Even though we only have one item for discussion tonight, I will note that we had a full and robust work session prior to this board meeting where we had several key items that the board discussed. So I will turn it over to Director Ellenberg, Chair of the Policy Committee, to walk us through these policies.
Thank you. Yes, we have a few policies for discussion tonight. The first one had no changes, but it's Policy 602, Organization of the School Calendar and School Day. So before I ask Sonia and Nate to actually walk 20 feet, I want to see if anyone has questions about that policy, because there weren't actually any changes to it.
Was it just reviewed because of the cycle?
Yes.
The cycle?
It was reviewed because of the cycle.
Okay.
I spared you, unless you need the steps for your phone. The second is Policy 606.5. And is it, Jody, are you taking this? And we have Director of Teaching and Learning, Jody D. St. Hubert, who's going to talk to us about this one. This one also, we're doing the 600 series right now. And so this didn't change that much. It was updated with MSBA model policy. And so there are a couple of updates, but there weren't really any substantive changes. I don't think I still pronounce that correctly. So if you would like to review those, that would be great.
I will, thank you, Chair Ellenberg. Director Ellenberg, that's happened twice tonight. My apologies, Chair Gable. Thank you, Vice Chair Ellenberg. Yes, you have highlighted the main things that we've done in looking at this. The purpose of this policy is the selection of and reconsideration of library materials. And so the area where the most changes occurred in alignment with MSBA wording is in the reconsideration section. And that also, there were some tweaks made there so that the policy and the appendix, the actual process of putting the work into place aligned and were clear and were tight. So the biggest section that I want to point out is Section 8, and that was enacted in 2024 by legislation, so that's an ADAD. And what's new about that is that once, the process is if a person has a challenge of materials, that they go to the principal and the media specialist at a building. If things are not resolved there, then they take that to a more formal process that you use the appendix forms to fill out. If that happens, that has to also be reported to MDE, no matter the result of that reconsideration and that process. So that's Section 8, and that was, again, new in 2024. Otherwise, that really highlights the majority of the things within the policy and the updates. Are there any questions, thoughts, feedback?
Yeah, Director Birdman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Director Barry.
A lot of our teachers have classroom libraries. And let me preface this question by saying that I truly believe our teachers are professionals who curate their classroom libraries with care and expertise. So this question is merely for clarification purposes. But would this policy apply to those libraries as well or just the media centers?
It would not. This applies to the media centers. There is a policy, I don't remember what policy, where it's like curriculum resources, where there's a process and that classroom libraries would fall under that.
Okay, thank you.
606?
I think you're right. I think it is 606.
Wow, I should have known. 606, 606.5?
It's a similar robust policy, but there's, because of the legislation from the state, I think this is good because it specifically clarifies the different areas, to your point. And then what are the specific policies or protocols, I should say, for those areas? Director Birdman.
I just had a clarifying question, just from the execution of the way the law is written and how the policy's been updated. So when we get, if we get to the point to where Library Materials Review Committee is launched by the superintendent and then, it's specific to that building's library or is it district-wide that this decision would then impact what happens?
That is a really good question. I think it would be, and I would need to follow up on this, district-wide.
Okay. Because what I found interesting as I read through it was when you look at how the review committee is structured, you know, it seems like it's specific to a library specialist, a building principal, so on and so forth. I'm assuming wherever the request came from of that particular level of the building. So if it's in the elementary school versus the high school, but we're, just a point of clarification, the policy doesn't need to be updated to say this, but I just want to make sure we understand that this would be district-wide, the superintendent would do this, and this would be on a district-wide basis. So that's how we would approach this.
Yes.
Director Birdman, Director D. St. Hubert is 100% correct. It is district-wide.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on this policy? Okay, thank you very much for the work and thank Bethany as well.
I will, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Policy 624. And as Assistant Superintendent, you'll go over, this is a completely new policy, correct? Okay.
So thank you. I will turn it over to you, Assistant Superintendent Swenson.
Okay, just a little, first of all, thank you Vice Chair Ellenberg. I just want to provide a little context about 624. So we began reviewing our current Policy 624 when this first came up. And what we realized over time was that we were trying to revise something that really wasn't revisable. And we figured out why, is that in 2023, the online learning statute law was rewritten. And so our current Policy 624, this is a general statement, doesn't cover everything, but it'll give you an idea about what the issue was. Our current Policy 624 addressed online supplemental providers only. And what is being recommended is that we pivot to the MSBA Policy 624 that is far more comprehensive in nature. And just to give you some of the additional pieces that are added into this policy that are not in our current Policy 624. So the MSBA model policy, it expands the scope to cover digital instruction, blended learning, online instructional sites, and supplemental online courses. The supplemental online courses was really the one thing that was addressed in our present policy. And then it just ensures full compliance with the Minnesota Online Instruction Act. In addition to that, in the current 624, there are only three defined terms. And in what the recommended policy, there are a set of 10 definitions, including things like digital instruction, blended instruction, online teacher, online instructional site, and supplemental online course provider. So it provides more clarity when you think about online instruction. There are also clearer procedures for enrollment and credit. And the MSBA version lays out step-by-step procedures for enrollment, approval, and monitoring of supplemental online courses. And it also requires that we appoint an online learning liaison, which in our case would be Stephen Cullison. And then another example of something that this does is it ensures that PSEOs another example of something that this does is it ensures that PSEO students receive the same supports as those who are in a traditional classroom. Let me just. I think that those are the main things that the new policy covers. Again, most of which are not presently covered in policy six twenty four that we have. So the recommendation is being made to utilize what MSBA has provided. What questions might you have?
Director Birdman?
The one question that I, I don't know where if this is appropriate in this conversation or not, but given the fact that we don't offer online education opportunities below high school, we got out of that business of doing so. This policy doesn't explicitly say like where we're obligated or where these rules apply. So the question that came up was, given that we don't currently offer that, but the policy doesn't say it's only for secondary level, are we obligated under the law to, if, if a student needed some sort of online or supplementary online education component, would we be obligated under the policy to still provide even though we don't actually have a program involved to do so? So we, we connect them to another vendor or provider to do so?
I would need to circle back to you on an answer for that one, only because we don't presently, to your point, offer online classes to sixth, seventh and eighth grade or K through five students.
It's important because of the way the policy is, is worded with the recommendation that's here. It doesn't, it leaves it open to interpretation as to whether we're obligated to do that. As it doesn't explicitly call out who it's for and who it's not for. I'm just curious as to what happens with that.
I can speak to that. And the laws changed quite a bit as well as our practices since COVID. And so there's been an active fluidity to those types of things. We would not be obligated to do that, but the policy would allow, should we go through the MDE process, to provide additional programming and accreditation, we certainly could, and the same guidance would apply.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. And then Assistant Superintendent Swenson, I, oh, or is it, are you staying up for the next one?
Yep.
Okay. The next one is policy nine oh three, visitors to the, to school district buildings and property. And there weren't many substantive, substantive changes to the policy. The changes were more in the appendix. And I'll also turn it over to you, Assistant, I can't say those words together, Assistant Superintendent Swenson, to walk through the changes in the appendix.
Just, I'll, I'll just go through the changes and to Vice Chair Ellenberg's point, there aren't substantive changes, but there is one piece in here that is worth noting for sure. Just the first thing I want to talk to, talk about is that there is a slightly revised PSEO portion that was just rewritten for clarity. So it's easier to understand what that portion of the policy was referring to. And it's just about access to technology that PSEO students have during the school day in, in our district. As it relates to, there's a visitor conduct portion. And we changed the wording slightly that it allows us the same discretion, but is more accurate of how we address visitors who may not be being their best selves. So we made a slight revision to that language. And then, and then we made also a slight edit to be more clear around photographing and filming. And then the, the part that I'd like to draw your attention to is just in appendix one for traffic and parking, we expanded the prohibition of recreational vehicles to include electric assisted bicycles. That is, that is, would be a new part of this policy. What questions might you have?
Questions? Excellent. That concludes the discussion of this month's policies. Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Swenson and the rest of the team that contributed.
All right, thank you. And these policies will come up for action at our November meeting. All right, we are moving on to the action portion of our meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the Language Access Plan?
So moved.
Birdman, is there a second?
Second.
Man, I welcome Dr. Franny Pecar, Director of Achievement Equity and Multilingual Learner, Learner Programming to discuss the plan with us. And welcome.
Good evening, Chair Gable, Dr. Birdman, members of the board. I am going to review quickly the Edina Public Schools Language Access Plan. Where the Language Access Plan comes from is the state of Minnesota in statute said that in the 25, 26 school year, all school districts needed to have a Language Access Plan. The state of Minnesota MDE, the Minnesota Department of Education provided ongoing work sessions last year for what should be in your Language Access Plan. So in the Edina Language Access Plan are the questions that the Minnesota Department of Education shared that we should answer in our Language Access Plan. I attended all those meetings, got the template. We had an opportunity to receive, share ideas with each other and receive feedback about things that we were asking to put on our template. Found those incredibly valuable in drafting the plan because at first, all of us who were attending the meetings went, what is this about? What are we supposed to create? But MDE did help walk us through it. So on the first pages, it just, you do, all your Language Access Plans are supposed to talk about the federal require, there's federal requirement and there are state requirements for the Language Access Plan. We cover that in our Language Access Plan. I think the most important part about the whole Language Access Plan is on page four. And I don't, I will read this part because I think this is the part that's the most important thing of it, is family rights. The family has a right to receive information about their child's education and their home language. If a family asks for that, they have a right to that. Families have a right to have an interpreter for important meetings about their child. So we, if they ask, we need to provide an interpreter. Doesn't have, we'll talk more about, doesn't have to be an interpreter, in-person interpreter, but they, they have a right to ask to have an interpreter there. And they have a right to participate fully in their child's educational experience. And we eliminate the barrier of language. I feel that's the most important part of all Language Access Plans is we come from the best intentions that we know. All of our families want to be active participants in their child's educational career. And in our job in the education system is to help remove barriers for them. Language Access Plan is one way that we remove barriers for our families. What is nice about the Language Access Plan is on the next page, and we have used this lately at some sites when people have called and asked us questions. We have provided the official Edina definitions of all of these terms. These were words that my department knew and used. And maybe everybody didn't have the exact same understanding that we had. But now we can say, these are Edina's interpretation of all of these words. That is, so you, that is a part of the Language Access Plan that needs to be in place. Language identification procedures, that is on page five when we talk about this. This, there's federal slash state law that talks about how you identify language. So we just took a process that was already in place. When you enroll in a school, you have to answer the Minnesota Language Survey, which there are four questions that families need to answer on that survey, indicating whether, what language is the primary language at home? What language their child learned and based off. And we at lots of districts, and Edina does too, adds in a fifth question, which is not part of the four questions, but that question does ask, what language do you as the family prefer to be contacted in? So that is one, when you asked the question earlier about how our liaisons contact families, that is the first way that they filter through names is they work with the enrollment department. And we get the list of names from families who have indicated the preference of language they want to be communicated in. There's lots of other ways. We bring families on board. But that's the, I like to say, that's the very first step, I think, as Blanca said. It's a lot of them being present in buildings and building relationships where we continue to add names to that. So that just as explains the process of our student information system that families ask. The important part about that, if anybody asks, is we don't look at a family and say, oh, I heard you speaking with an accent and make assumptions about a family's language and start contacting them in that language. We make no assumptions. We strictly go by what the family has shared with us on how they want to be communicated. Think that is what that is guaranteeing there. The next part is we have several tools that we use to communicate with families. One clarification when we talk about communicating with families and interpretation, our cultural liaisons are not interpreters. They do not interpret. Our cultural liaisons are there to be cultural support or affinity support for a family when they're in a meeting in a difficult time. We ask that if it is a challenging meeting that needs an interpreter, that an interpreter is called and the cultural liaison is there. And so that is very hard for a liaison to interpret and provide support to a family at the same time. So we stay very, we, we're very strict about that in my department. We are constantly reminding people. Now, we do interpret in emergencies. Emergencies happen where you can't get an interpreter. But if it is a planned or scheduled meeting, we have provided multiple ways that we can have interpreters present. So the three ways that we can do interpretation is we have OPI, over the phone interpretation. And you just dial a number and you can do it over the phone or you can put your phone on speakerphone and you can do interpretation that way. Just this school year, we've added virtual remote interpretation so that you log into your computer and a face shows up in a Google Meet. And you can put your computer here and you can be here. And they can, there is a face that goes with a person, so it's virtual remote interpretation. You can schedule those meetings or they're on demand. And then the final way is in-person interpretation. Those are the three ways that we provide interpretation. Virtual remote, virtual remote interpretation, VRI, has taken off in the district. I look at the numbers every other day just to make sure of like, was this worth our investment? And yes, it has been worth our investment. Another way that we found out this summer when we were reviewing this with principals that staff communicate with families is through text. And I'm forgetting the name because I don't use it. There was a texting app that, yes, Talking Points. So a lot of our teachers communicate with families via Talking Points with our multilingual families because they have a way that they can switch how they read it. So that, we have a lot of ways that we provide that. As you know, if you look at our website, in the corner, you can click and you can change the language of the website. So there's many ways that we provide access to language for families in the district. We had some gaps and the Language Access Plan was helpful for us because it helped us identify those gaps. And we closed those gaps and just added some more opportunities within our system to support families. In here, we do have guidance on using AI for interpretation, for translation. AI for translation. It is okay to use AI for translation if it is not a vital document. And federally, they define what a vital document is. So if a family asks to have an IEP, the family has a right. And if they ask to have an IEP translated, we can't use AI for that. We don't automatically have to translate it, but if the family asks, then we need to go through appropriate translation. If a student, if they wanted a report card translated, we would have to go through a certified translation service for that. We have two of our liaison, Farhan Hussein are certified interpreters. They're not certified translationists. So we do have to go through a translation service for those. I think those are important things for people to understand with the Language Access Plan. And the state of Minnesota wants people to clearly understand when you're using professional interpreters, it is a certification to be a professional interpreter. When you're translating, it's a certification to be a professional translator because you want to make sure you get the nuance of the message across to the parent. And there was AI guidance on translation. Talked about why we would not want to use AI on those vital documents. It could get us in trouble. And it just, and then the people that support this are our cultural liaisons. And then the other group that supports this are our English language development teachers. So they are for our multilingual learners who are learning English and they're in English language development classes. They, I work closely with them and they support a lot of our families helping to make sure that their needs are being met. And that is, we did review this with, as part of the Language Access Plan, you are supposed to review it with principals. So we have reviewed it with principals. We get questions coming our way and we share it with teach. Just this week, as I said, we were sharing it with some teachers about interpretation because some families were trying to have, sometimes families want a relative to interpret. And it's nice to have in a Language Access Plan that we can say, well, that's lovely, except for we need to have, you know, we need to either use video remote or have an in-person interpreter. So, you know, one site was working with some families that, about needing a certified interpreter. And, let's see, oh, last page, there was, there was a lot of technical stuff is why it was like, God, so many pages long. We reviewed it with principals, staff are know about it. And we had to put it on the district website. And we have it at the bottom where it says Language Access Plan. And once the board gives your official approval, we will work on going ahead and having it. We always translate in Edina Somali and Spanish. We will then have a translated Somali and Spanish copy on the website. It's just not there yet because we have not approved it. Any questions?
Director Barry?
Thank you for this. This is really fantastic and important. I'm wondering if, as we get used to using these new tools, you know, this is required for all the essential parent notifications. Our PTOs, especially at the elementary level, do a lot of the community building organizing. Just, you know, thinking ahead if it would maybe be possible to partner with them and using some of these tools to reach families, not just to let them know an event is happening, but to maybe get to families earlier and think, this is what this is. Would you like to come on board and help us plan this just as a community building? Just something to think about, you know, but thank you for this.
Director Ellenberg?
Two questions. One is, given the current state of certain things in our country right now, I could see families being leery about putting their language on forms when they register their students. And I was just wondering if we communicate the purpose of why we're asking that and what we actually do with the information to ensure that families are comfortable giving us information in order to help educate their children. Because I would hate for that to be a barrier to parents engaging in our education system and students as well. So I was just wondering about that.
So that is all. So that is all, not just this year, or that has always been an issue with families wanting to put, some families just will always put English, English only, and you know that it's not, because you hear them speaking another language right in front of you. But I always work with staff, we have to respect the family's choice. Now, our ML teachers are absolutely amazing, and our front office staff are amazing, and they will build relationships with families. And as they build those relationships with families, we will get, we will find out what a family's needs are. So we've always navigated that, and we really do lean into, as Blanca said, liaisons being in the buildings is so important, and them being around and building relationships. And then our front office staff, they are just really wonderful, and our ML teachers build those relationships with families too. But I do, with that, I'm always, it's a conversation I've had a lot this year, and I said, we have to respect what the family put down, even if we are looking at them, and they are speaking a different language, and in front of us, we have to. So it's just a lot of communication that that information is not shared. I believe our enrollment office, they're absolutely amazing down there in the conversations that they have with families, that this is just to support you. We're not sharing it, we're not sharing the information anywhere.
Thank you for speaking to that. A second piece, which is along the same lines of what Director Berry said, is, I think it'd be great to partner with our Communications Department, not to put any more work on our communications area. But so many of our communications not just come from PTOs, but come from individual schools, and explaining what formats can be automatically translated and what can't, because as parents, we get a lot of PDFs, and those are not translatable. And I think just trying to explain, because a lot of people don't understand that, explaining, when you send out a school newsletter, when you do this, when you do that, can you please try to use these formats? Because then our families that aren't English language speakers can automatically translate it. And so just maybe some learnings in different areas wherever we touch.
That is really, really good advice, because I learned that this summer when I was traveling, and I was, when I went to translate, if somebody's website had a lot of PDFs on it, I was like, I couldn't do the automatic translate. That is an important part of this.
A lot of what we communicate at the school level, like posters for activities, a lot of it is PDF-based, so just a, or if there's a secondary document that, yeah. So just a question slash comments. So, thank you.
Director Birdman?
My question is really about the training and understanding of the staff if they then need to use this plan. So not just the people who might be doing IEPs or doing something, but even a teacher who's trying to, even though they're using some of the mechanisms you talked about, but where they has a really clear process, they've been trained on how they need to be able to access an interpreter for something that's critically important in that messaging. I want to make sure that not only is this plan clearly that we approve it, and it's in place, and so and so, but it's only as valuable to where we then have it accessible, authorized, and encouraged to be used, where it will be most effective for what the goal is for doing so. So do you have any comments or clarifications on how staff are going to know how this works and have easy accessibility for authorization to get it done, so they can do that?
So we've worked with the principals, and then I am working with the admin deans at the buildings. And so the admin deans are the ones who took on, they're like, we will make sure staff know how to use video remote interpretation. So just continuing to work with admin deans and work with principals to make sure that staff have what they need. Staff, again, as I said, staff reach out to me. We make sure that the ML teachers are absolutely versed on this, because a lot of times people will go to the ML teacher in the building. Just getting it out there slowly.
You mentioned earlier, as far as how we might measure, like its utilization and so on and so forth. Have you already come up with metrics, or what your frequency of what you want to look at, or goals you have around using that?
I just wanted to know if video remote interpretation was going to be used. So we use Language Line, and Language Line is a system, it's the one that's most used by schools and hospitals of all of the video remote interpretation systems. So they have a dashboard that you can go on and see. I could pull it up right now and see yesterday, this many people use. So we were, actually, last year, we were on a downward trend of our use of Language Line. And now that we have brought video remote interpretation in, and I've been walking around telling a lot of people Talking Point is important, but we also need to build in-person relationships with it. You don't, you can't really build a relationship via text, so sometimes we do have to call families. That has been my rallying cry for a year. I got to see that our use over last year was up. Our year-over-year use was up this year. So people are getting the message that there are resources. In Edina, we just got very used to always calling a in-person interpreter, and also getting people used to the idea that there are other resources out there that can interpret.
Thank you.
I would just say thank you for the, for the work. I would just say to our community members that much of this was in place already in Edina Public Schools. We pride ourselves on the work that we do. This document was helpful in that we just articulate that better for us to share with our students, our families, and our staff. So thank you for your work, and we'll continue to do everything we can to support our families.
Thank you. We will now vote to approve the Language Access Plan. All those in favor of approving the Language Access Plan, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Language Access Plan is approved. Thank you, Dr. Bakir. All right, and our last item for action this evening is to approve some policies. So do I have a motion to approve Policies 208, 516, 516.5, 524, and 713?
So moved.
Man, is there a second?
Second.
Allenberg? Policy Chair Allenberg, I will turn it over you, to you to mention anything about these policies, since we reviewed them at our last meeting.
There are no changes since we discussed them at the last meeting. And so unless there are questions, I am ready to move forward with approving them.
We will now vote to approve Policies 208, 516, 516.5, 524, and 713. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Policy 208, 516, 516.5, 524, and 713 are approved. Board members, do you have any leadership or committee updates for the board and the public? I have one. Just a reminder that on September 23rd, the board voted to approve the Minnesota School Board Association, or MSBA, as our preferred search firm in helping us with the permanent superintendent search. In tonight's consent agenda, the board approved the contract with MSBA. And tomorrow evening at 6:30, we will be holding a special meeting with MSBA to begin our work together. So tomorrow's meeting will include a workshop for the board called Hiring the Right Superintendent, and we will also be discussing the timeline, stakeholder surveys, and other pertinent beginning-of-search topics. Superintendent Bittman, do you have any updates for us?
Madam Chair, just one for the board. This month's boardroom display features art of some, some of Madame French Amara's students at Normandale, so you'll see some great new artwork throughout our district boardroom. Her first grade students have been working on art supply robots. And after learning all about the proper use of their art supplies, they trace their supplies and turn them into their own robot creations. The second graders created still life painting using them in front of them. And then the fourth graders have been working on bird creation. So after studying the style of Australian artist Pete Cromer, students painted their own unique papers of their colorful bird creations. And then finally, the fifth grade students designed some city landscapes focused on the art principle of contrast and the use of color versus no color on the oil pastels and pen. So we are grateful for Madame Amara French and her students for sharing these examples of artwork that they have done at the beginning of this school year, and they certainly brighten up the room.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Arum, is there a second?
Second.
Allenberg? We will vote to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is passed, and the October 13th, 2025, board meeting has adjourned.